Agenda additions and or deletions. Tim, do you have any?
Ah, the staff has none, Mr. Chairman.
How about the board members?
None.
Okay. We have approval of the minutes. Do we have minutes available?
Yeah, they came.
They came online. I didn't open mine.
Oh, they were with the...
I apologize.
They were in the packet.
Not in mine.
Oh.
But that was all right. That's my fault. I did not read them, but I'm gonna have to pass on that. So, anybody else have any additions or corrections in it?
Yeah, on page seven, there was a spelling problem. Mr. Marty Valderama, V-A-L-D-E-R-R-A-M-A. That would be my only correction.
With that correction, can we get an approval of the minutes?
So moved.
We'll have a second?
Second.
They're moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All approved. This is the time of the meeting where we open up for public comment. Seeing nobody looking like they're coming forward, I will close, immediately open and close public comment. There are two items on the agenda for today in a public hearing. One is an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida amending the land development regulations, Part Two of the Code of the City of Vero Beach relating to medical marijuana dispensaries providing for conflict and severability provided for an effective date. And, Tim, I think, are you gonna make the presentation?
Yeah, I'll make the presentation. The chief's here to answer specific questions you may have.
Okay.
Chief's been involved all along on the original ordinance, and we discussed this ordinance. So before you now, you have a draft ordinance for the regulating of medical marijuana dispensaries. And the proposed regulations address location, development standards, and operation facilities for dispensing of medical marijuana. If you all recall, we went through this exercise last year.
Yep.
It went through a hearing before you, two hearings before the city council. It was passed, but it was all contingent upon the amendment passing, the state amendment to the Constitution, which failed the same day it was approved, so it was not enacted, basically. So it was null and void at that time. We're aware that the state of Florida, either through the amendment to this, another attempted amendment to the Constitution, or alleged safe actions considering legalizing the dispensing of marijuana for medical purposes. As strongly recommended by the League of Cities and other public advocacy organizations, the city attorneys recommended that the city move forward with an ordinance to regulate medical marijuana dispensaries. Such laws be enacted to legalize this activity. I think the intent is that we're in place, so that would help provide some, a foundation if we want to be grandfathered in, so we have some regulations in place. It would also help the League of Cities, because there's no guarantee that we're gonna be grandfathered, but the League of Cities, obviously, are trying to line up numerous cities involved. It would be much harder for the legislature to then trump everybody and preempt everything. And so, we think that would certainly help them in their lobbying efforts and help the city. And the other thing is, obviously, as we did before, it sends a message out to those individuals and organizations that want to do business and set up a medical marijuana dispensary, and we're showing what this city expects out of them on that type of activity. We looked at the previous ordinance, both the city attorney, my staff, the police chief, we looked over that ordinance, and at the time, we felt that, you know, we went through all this effort, we feel we have a very strong ordinance for doing this, that we would stick with the same ordinance. There was a minor change in the definition of medical marijuana dispensary. We've argued about all sorts of things on that. We could get into that, but it, basically, it's the same ordinance. There were a couple typos that we're gonna pick up in it, and they're still in here, believe it or not. You know, you can always, with our ordinance. I'm not gonna go through any real detail on this unless you got, because we went through this last year, but I certainly will answer questions. But what we've done in this ordinance is we have specific, the major contents, we've set up specific guidelines where these could be located, and basically, our approach was that we would say, we were trying to keep them away for sensitive land uses, and in the industrial district. So, we did a map that shows, basically, based on that criteria, where they could be. Now, this is not in the zoning ordinance, this is just a reference, and it may not be totally accurate. This was done for presentation purposes, just to show generally where these may be eligible. But remember that any of these that would come in the city, now we have to meet the location requirement, but also required be a conditional site plan approval. And there's numerous requirements that are placed on this. A lot of those were added on later when we, several of them, we made modifications, we got to the city council. So, there was quite a bit of vetting of this whole ordinance the first time around. So, basically, the staff, as the planning department, the city attorney, and the police chief are recommending move forward, but of course, if there's some other changes that you wanna propose to go to the city council. We are trying to move this forward. I think Peggy can go into, but the magic date is get it before November 1, just to be on the safe side.
As soon as we can.
As soon as we can. So, delays in it, you know, or, right now, we're in good track, but I just wanted to emphasize that. So, Mr. Chairman, unless you have a specific question, me, the police chief, or the city attorney, I mean, we're open to suggestions.
The only comment I'd like to make, some, sure, I know you weren't on the board then. Were you on the board during 14 November? No.
No.
You came in afterwards. So, two of our members here today were not, had not experienced this before, so they may have more questions than we, than possibly my partner here, my right, might have. So, my understanding is, we're basically looking at the same thing we looked at before, and the city council actually looked at this also. It was never enacted. Okay?
That's right. They went through and did the adoption after two hearings. Since this changes uses in a district, it would require two public hearings for the council.
So, we have to repeat those, Tim? Is that correct?
We have to go through the same process that we did the first time around. That's exactly right.
And the reason we didn't complete it the first time is because it was shot down at the legislature.
Well, as I said, it was the same day the council adopted it, the amendment passed. It was on a voting day, and the amendment did not pass, so therefore, we had a clause in there that sunsetted that ordinance immediately if the...
Oh, I didn't. I didn't. Okay.
Yes, we had that in there.
Also, I might add that after that referendum didn't pass, the legislature took it up, and there was a lot of action on the medical marijuana front in the legislative session in 2015. A lot of it died on the table when the House closed early, three days early.
I remember.
And the last thing that was produced out of the Senate was Senator Bradley had an amendment that, basically, some of the folks that I've talked to at the League of Cities and some other folks who lectured us at a legal seminar this past summer said, was probably about as good as we're gonna get, and that allowed local government to retain local authority over the retail outlets and to do some of the things that we're doing. And it's those types of groups that are saying, please get this into place now, as soon as you can, in case there isn't a total preemption, and there is some grandfathering like there was, for example, with the vacation rentals, that we might be able to capture that grandfathering for our city and have in place what we want, not just what the state or the feds want. And also, Tim and I have noticed a troubling amount of articles about how the federal government is also going in the same direction. So, we may not have the federal preemption, I mean, we may not have the federal ban at some point this next year as well.
Peggy, I do recall that you told me that part of the Bradley, the one thing the state may retain would be the processing cultivation, right, of the marijuana, which we definitely don't allow in the city.
We banned.
I mean, from our stamp, from a local government. So, just to bring that out, we do not have that.
Processing and cultivation is not covered by this at all.
That's correct. It's excluded. We only deal with the retail dispensing of medical marijuana. And I wanted to also point out, I don't know what the progress is on it, but if the Charlotte's Web, the low THC marijuana, they're still involved with trying to get the regulations passed on that. I mean, it's been going...
Well, you remember how long it took with the pill mills?
Yeah.
At the state level, chief.
So, you can imagine, even medical marijuana may take a while, even if it were to get some, the legislation, so.
Should we be dealing with the growing and the processing of this in this ordinance? It's not a, it's not, it can't be there. It can't be there. Is that correct?
We specifically excluded. I think we're concerned that would have, and you can talk to the police chief about it, that really raises some real issues from, and you could maybe go into that, I think.
Another thing that was also raised with some of the groups that I've talked to this past summer was, and I thought this was kind of interesting, people coming in, looking at various sites around a community, whether it be county or municipality, settling on one site, buying the site with the desire to do this, possibly investing in a lot of buildings, whatever, and then, basically, saying that, that they've, we've invested a lot of money, and we're gonna fight you because you've put your regulations in after we purchased, in reliance on the fact that there were no rules in place at this time. And so, that's another consideration, and another reason why we'd like to move forward with this as soon as we can.
Okay.
Is there ever gonna be a possibility that marijuana-growing farms would be allowed in this area?
Well, from the law enforcement perspective, I certainly hope not. Again, with the potential legalization of dispensing for medical marijuana, which could, and that's why we're here today, specifically, as law enforcement, we would like to see and agree with Peggy and Tim, of course, with this ordinance and working together with them in that regard. If that's the case, then the right people should get that right medicine, if you will. But that's it, solely that's it, and we want it to be as restrictive as we can here in our city. I've mentioned it a couple times, if you go around the city and look around, and you probably know already, we don't have adult arcades in the city limits, and there's a reason for that. You can go into the county or throughout Treasure Coast, and there's adult arcades all over the place, so just keep that in mind as well. That's why we are who we are in Vero Beach. So, if, again, medical is allowed, there's a reason for it, you know, and we want the people to get that necessity, if that's the case, but we want it to be as restrictive as possible in that regard. And I also have some information that I certainly can share with you this afternoon with regard to Colorado, who in 2010 had medical marijuana introduced, but then in 13, they allowed for recreational, and then in 14, their stores opened up. And in Denver today alone, there's 390 stores in Denver alone. And I was at the Florida Police Chiefs Conference at the end of June, beginning of July, and Michael Song with the Colorado Attorney General's Office spoke to us, and a fellow with the Marijuana Enforcement Division, a new group there, spoke to us, and they talked to us about a number of things, and I can share some bullet points with you in that regard, but they wish they aren't where they are today, and they have some regrets in what they've done. Again, especially when it comes to legalizing marijuana and having it recreational, it's literally out of hand.
I have a couple of questions. I had spoke with the chief on this issue. We talked about for medical purposes only, you know, medical dispense and for medical purposes, smoke only. You know, there's other ways that I'm concerned with, if they have, like, put it on candy or a different way that a person could take it. I'd like to make sure that what's in this ordinance now, that it is only dispensed for medical purposes. They can't do it in, I'll just use the term candies, it could be a number of things. And the only way that we know, that I know of right now, if a person is diagnosed where they have to do the medical marijuana situation, the only way to take it in is through smoking. And that's in this ordinance, and it protects us from any other way that they can dispense it. Is that there, Mr. McGarry, the protection?
There's an oil as well, to my understanding, like a pill form?
Yeah, there is, there's, especially for pediatric use for children. They do have an oil.
Right.
From my understanding, they also have a flavored liquid, like a cough medicine-type thing.
Right.
And I've checked into that, and there are several of those avenues available for children who have cancer and other...
Right. Just like any medicine, that you wanna try to have a child take, that they may take it easier if it's flavored in that regard. One thing, again, with taking it further, which, again, we don't wanna see anything past, I don't wanna see anything past the medical level, if you will, but some of their bullet points, again, is that they were telling us that Colorado's doubled in the use of marijuana, cocaine, and alcohol since this came out. It certainly, again, is a segue drug. You'll have people argue that, but marijuana is clearly, to me and to most law enforcement, a segue drug to other drugs, if you will. There's an 8% tax on medical marijuana and a 30% tax on recreational marijuana in the state of Colorado. And they're saying that's about $80 million a year, and they're claiming it's going to the schools, but they said to us right there, if you are doing it for the money, that's the wrong reason in that regard. They say the schools, the attitudes have changed there. The kids that are in the school see mom and dad smoking marijuana legally, and it's okay for them to do the same. And again, I don't see that we want that here in the state of Florida, let alone here in Vero Beach. There's two amendments out there, Amendment 20, which talks about the medical conditions, but then Amendment 64 in Colorado, a person over 21 is allowed to grow up to three plants in their home and utilize that marijuana from those plants if you keep it within your homestead, if you will. They're also allowed to possess an ounce if they're moving around, traveling in their car, going from one place to another, and they can even give an ounce away. That's Amendment 64 in the state of Colorado. So, you know, that's where they're at as well. Again, there's 390 stores in Denver alone. The THC level, and we spoke about that briefly earlier, in 2015, it's, the content is 10 to 35%, as opposed to 2 to 3% in marijuana, what it used to be. So, and Board Member Doug mentioned it, but edibles, candy bars, gummy bears, drinks, mints, gummy bears and drinks and mints and edibles like that, candy, who is that made for, generally? It's made for children, you know, not adults. So, they're selling it in many forms. In fact, we made a search warrant here on US-1 recently and uncovered marijuana, but to include a gummy bear that the adult female had flown back from Colorado with, just for information purposes there. So, we all know it failed by about a mere 2% last time, and they're talking about quality of life there in Denver and in Colorado. Tattoo parlors, pot shops, vape shops on every corner with their, you know, pot-type shops as well. So, and then if they said that they can go back, they would not commercialize edibles, no, all this artificial flavoring that they're doing, and they would do more funding and training and equipment. It's overwhelming for them. Their data isn't like it should be. It just kinda snowballed in front of their eyes. And it's, remember, it's an all-cash business right now. And so, you know, if the bad guy knows the store's open and they're dealing in all cash, and they know people are coming and going with cash, who's gonna be involved? The law enforcement agency in that jurisdiction? So, that's another thing that we have to keep in mind. There are just a few things I thought I'd share with you after speaking to Board Member Doug, that, again, that we certainly don't wanna see, but that's not the medical end, but these are the things that Colorado are going through that we, you know, that I know we, I don't want to go through, and I can't imagine anyone else. So, just to give you that little bit of information, I have Michael Song's email and phone number. I can call him or email him anytime, and he's literally the point man under the Attorney General in Colorado. So, that's a good source of information, and he's easy to access and speak with.
I just wanted to point out about the cash thing, the federal government, I mean, Congress is already looking at to allow banks to get involved.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, things are changing.
Right.
I mean, we're not kidding you, they're changing on all levels throughout the country. So, I mean...
My concern had been, it still is, if you call it medical marijuana, you're obviously thinking that you're covering legitimate medical need. And of course, what you're talking about now is how, you know, it's gone out of that. If we call it legal medical marijuana, are we okay with that? Can it be gamed? Is that sufficient to call it that, legal, maybe?
Well, it's the legalizing of the medical marijuana dispensing, so I think, and Peggy can probably...
I think we're good, yeah, because our definition is very tight.
That's what I would like...
It's restricted to medical marijuana, but I think what the chief was saying, and Tim alluded to it too, was that once the medical marijuana bill is passed in some form or shape, whether it be by referendum in the Constitution, which failed last year but not by much...
Yeah.
Or by the legislature, which I think the state is trying to get ahead of another referendum attempt, you know, that's the next step from that, and these states that the chief has talked about is to recreational marijuana. And that's been the progression that we've seen in Colorado, Washington State, Oregon, I don't know how many...
And if anything gets passed, most hope it would be via legislation and not a ballot, where it would be constitutional, and then we'd be stuck with it.
It's very hard to get something out of the Constitution once it's in.
Right.
Okay, back, selling forms, are we protected the way it's sold as far as for the medical, for someone with a medical, bona fide medical condition?
Yes, we're protected.
Is it spelled out that how it's being sold out of a dispensary here in the city of Vero?
Yes, we are, and it's a conditional use. But back to your previous question was about the gummy bear forms, and I don't know if the chief knows a lot more than I do about the cannabis laws, but it's, marijuana has the same meaning given cannabis in a certain section in Florida statutes, but in our definition, we say that dispenses marijuana, products containing marijuana, so it's not just the plant in our definition. It could be.
Correct.
Yeah. Depending on how the state regulates it.
That I would like to tighten down, because when you use the word products, it could be a number of things, and, you know, later on down the road, if we don't have the protection in place, it may be very hard for us to implement some more protections.
But how would you do that? Because if you do have children who...
That's right.
...who need this, and the only way that they, I've watched many medical shows where parents have taken their children out of the United States because they would not provide a liquid for a three-year-old to take. How do you provide that to a child who really needs this medical marijuana to be rid of pain?
I guess I would say this, you would look to the medical profession, because, number one, they would diagnose a child that needs the medical marijuana. The medical folks would know how to give that to the child and best prescribe a way, whether it's on a tablet, in an oil form, and they could prescribe it, and you could take what they're suggesting, instead of saying, let's say for the sake of argument, and just make this simple, a pill form where you put the oil on it. All right, the doctor is gonna say, well, what, how big the pill should be, let's say. The oil goes on it, but then you have someone, well, you said products, we can put it on the gummy bears, we can put it on the lollipops, but let's look to the medical profession and see how they feel a child should take it.
I agree, but if you take the word product out, then there's no way of providing it to a child.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I got a feeling the state's going to intervene, and they're gonna set what kind of, I mean, this is for medical purposes. They're not gonna be allowing gummy bears to be dispensing and not necessarily...
And that's the key, we're on that medical part.
Yeah. And that's what we gotta remember. I don't, you know...
We went through this last time, too.
Yeah, I don't think we can...
If I remember correctly, we tried to get into details of all this, and the legislative information that's gonna come to us is gonna override that. This is zoning for zoning purposes and for product purposes.
And I think as we get further down here, and Peggy's pointed out, if we have to, we may have a chance that when we have an ordinance in place, we could amend it if we see some changes that need to be done that we can do.
Right.
But right now, we're dealing with, we're an uncertain target, because we're, we don't know what's gonna happen totally at the state. We have some idea, and we think that this ordinance is our best start on this issue.
Actually, I'm glad you said that.
Yeah.
You know, going forward, you know, we may need to do some changes, and that's kinda what I was looking for.
Yes.
To go on the record from our P&amp;Z director, as this is moving forward, it could come back where we can make those changes, and that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, I think Tim's right, it is a moving target right now at the state and federal level, and as that target starts to narrow over the next legislative session, we'll be able to pinpoint more. But just the League of Cities is saying, get something in place now to protect yourself, cities.
Okay. Here's one of the things, if we have something in here that we, it's found to be unconstitutional, that's the best word I can come up with right now, for example, a number 11 here, which is to provide an armed security guard and the premise and all that, if that's found to be ruled otherwise, doesn't negate the entire ordinance, only that part of it, is that correct?
Yeah, take a look at Section 6, which is the conflict and severability section.
Correct.
We put those in all of our ordinances, and that's for that very purpose.
Are we overstepping in those? What I wouldn't like to do is have us get into jeopardy because we've overstepped our ability or our authority and get the whole thing thrown out because we...
No, we're using our police power. We're well within our police power...
That's what I was concerned with.
...and municipal power to do this.
I thought that was the biggest step, I thought was...
Now, if the state comes in and preempts the entire field...
I see, okay.
But I think what I've been told is there's going to be a bit of horse trading, and they're hoping that perhaps the state will leave us a little bit of grandfathering for ordinances just like this, where you're citing and you're locational, and you're in the LDR, you're in the land use development regs, and that's what we're hoping for.
I don't really wanna hope for that. I hope we don't get it passed at all, that's what I hope, you know.
I had a little question on the permitting entry and inspection by authorized personnel. Is there a way we can require them to keep such records that we can see what has been taken in and then what has been sold, so that we see that that's a clean operation? Or is that too intrusive?
Is that regulation by the industry?
Well, that, yeah, I think, we discussed this the first time, that's gonna be the state probably doing that. I mean, you can over-regulate the local, but there's gonna be some state involvement in this, just like the pill mills where they have the...
Right.
And I think we discussed that the first time around.
I think we did, too.
And that's the issue, too, that they have to consider as, for instance, who's the authority over this? Is it the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, FDLE? Is it the state, the Health Department?
Right.
That kinda thing in regard to those type of advances.
It shouldn't be the Planning Department, probably.
I hope not.
Thank you. I mean, you can be given a lot of things, but maybe you should be given this, too, I'm not sure.
Is there any overlap here with the ADA handicap access? Is there anything that we need to look at more specifically?
Well, no, these site provisions, if it's a new, they're gonna have to meet ADA. Generally, when you have a change of use and all that, they'll...
Okay, but that's not going to inhibit any of what we're able to regulate?
Well, we regulate it through the planning process or the development process right now.
Okay.
Colorado's issued 2,250 licenses.
That's a lot of licenses.
That's medical and recreational and testing facilities.
Tim and Peggy, maybe just a little enlightening for myself, what would happen if we didn't put this into place in Vero Beach?
If the legislature does provide some form of grandfathering in the next legislative session, we would not have any grandfathering. So... So, just like I was saying before, someone could come in, they could buy a piece of property...
Okay.
We could say, wow, we really don't want a medical marijuana facility there, and they would say, well, you don't have anything on the books, and I bought it, relying on the fact that I could build whatever I wanted to here.
Okay. Thank you.
There's not an exemption for it right now. This makes it specifically identifies as a particular usage.
This makes it as a use, because right now, somebody could try to claim that we have a medical use, and we do allow medical throughout, so we've got actual land use here, there won't be, interpretation won't be subject to going, you know, appealing my, you know, call on this.
And they could put it next to the hospital, or a lot of places that allows medical, where we've defined it more so with this under specific locations.
Exactly right. I mean, that could be an argument raised that, wait a minute, you allow medical users, this is medical, you know, and I can, I wanna be there, you know, so...
And without any distancing.
Yeah.
We have distancing here.
There are no requirements, no conditions.
No armed guards there, no, you know, we wouldn't have many of those protections that we carefully, that you all carefully built in, and I know what you're hearing on this a year ago, you added four or five different things that you wanted to see in the ordinance as well, that we included and sent to city council, and they were approved. So, you were very helpful in that regard.
The other question I have for the P&amp;Z director, with this type of zoning, and you have explained it to me in the last few days of why the particular area that you have penciled off, where else in the city could a marijuana dispensary be set up with this type of zoning that serves? I call it the M-zoning.
Well, we do have industrial zones, a lot of them are either at the airport, you're not gonna be doing it at the airport, or other places in the city that are within so many feet of the parks and that, and there aren't really, we looked at, there aren't really any other places in the city except in that one area.
Okay. We also spoke, the P&amp;Z director and myself, where they have it, and I'm not happy it's where it is, 'cause it's, you know, by our downtown. I'm not happy it's where it is because it's, you know, by our downtown. We talked about the railroad tracks because the majority of it is to the east side of the tracks. And we talked about that, and the tracks make pretty, pretty good buffer for this type of situation. If you look at your map, there's a little jog there, it's another, another piece of property, I call it, it's a separate lot. It's, and I know the area very well because I, you know, live not too far from there. It's at the end of Seventeenth Place, it goes back to the west. And let me draw your attention to page number four, and if you would please, look at B2. And it gives the length that they should be from schools, daycare, and 500 feet from any residentially zoned property. And that's a good thing for that. Now, I'd like to see that little jog taken out because at the end of Seventeenth Place, you have a number of affordable rental units. Also, when you head down that way, there's some small businesses there, there's an AC company, there's an art situation. And the way it's situated there, it could create problems later on down the road where this property is isolated on a dead end. It says here, you want to protect residential zone property where people live. Well, I want to make the case here today, at the end of this block, you do have people living there, it just happens to be affordable rental units. You have a cross-section of people that live there, you have older people that live there, you have children that live there, and middle-aged people. There's really no reason for this property to be there. It is a vacant lot, somebody could grab it and, you know, put up a dispensary, and later on down the road, I'll tell you right now, we're going to have situations. I've done quite a bit of research on my own on this, talked to other people actually that have these type of dispensaries in their area. I tell you what, it messes up a community, period, end of statement. Chief alluded to some of those things today. I asked the council at the time, when they were looking at it, to take out the jog. There's no rules in place right now that the city has that we have to do that. There's enough area down there, if you take a look at it, if somebody happens to come in or buys a property or reconditions a property and they have to put up a dispensary, hey, that's great. I like what the P and Z director explained to me about the railroad being a barrier. Let it be on the east side, get the jog out of there, it's not needed. I've talked to some other staff members throughout the city, they had thought the jog was taken out. At the time, when I talked to the council, they didn't really have too much reservations, they were just going by the recommendations of the P and Z director. So I'm okay with what they got so far here in the ordinance. I like what the P and Z director put on record, as far as, as this thing is moving, we can tweak it along the way. I would be in favor of the ordinance, and the only, the change I would like, because there are people, remember now, just because it's affordable living there, these folks are people, too. They don't know this is up on the board, I do. And I want to protect these people. There's no need for this to be a part of this. Now, and I want to also make the case, there's other, I call it M zoning, you have other M zoning in the city where maybe they can put it there. You don't need it there. Right now, we're making the call where it goes, we're not doing an overlay, and this is what the director explained to me, it's not an overlay zone. So I want it, to be frank with you all, I want it out.
Well, as I explained to you, that this is all based on distance from sensitive land uses.
Understood.
So for us to take that out, we would have to go to an overlay district, which would take us some time to come up the criteria. We cannot unilaterally. This thing's away from, so many feet away from residential units.
What about the people that live there now?
I mean, and this is not, excuse me, this is not a, this isn't in the ordinance, this may not even be totally accurate. We just drew this based on getting the GIS out to show where it could be. But this isn't a, 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 a boundary like a zoning district where you can do certain things. And the other thing I want to point out, these things have to go through a site plan, conditional use. I mean, you see all the, the requirements in that conditional use. If there's going to be a real problem at the site, any of these sites could be causing problems, even more so than what you believe on that site. So I'm just saying, if, for us to change that, we would have to, we'd have to change the way this ordinance is being proposed, meaning we would have to look at a different way to do this and classify the, based on public interest and a lot of other criteria to, to single out lots that would be on there. So we would be back starting again.
And, and to that end, as Tim was saying, if you look at 62.654B1, one of the things that you have to find, because it says, "Planning and zoning boards shall not approve a proposed medical marijuana dispensary if it determines," and this is you all, "any of the following," and look at number one. "The proposed medical marijuana dispensary will create noise, traffic, odor, public safety hazards, or other nuisances to a degree that it will be disruptive to abutting or nearby properties, and will lead to degradation of property values and instability to nearby neighborhoods or business districts." You have to affirmably find that is not true. So in that jog area or any of these areas, if it looks like that's going to be an issue-
To, to me, it jumped over the track when you, again, I know the area. In the event that something goes through the state where these dispensaries are allowed, where these people live, they could sell that, because then now your property becomes valuable because you can put up these type of dispensaries. The railroad tracks ask, acts as a buffer. When I looked at it, I still don't think it should be there. It jumps over the tracks when you take a ride through there. It makes sense what the P and Z director was saying where it's located. I don't think it should be there. I'm not going to support it with the jog. I made this case before the council, and I'll tell you all right now, I'll be back out in the community letting people know what's going in their backyard. There's people that live there, this is going to be near their homes, this thing could go through. And the idea is do as much preventive maintenance that you can before anything happens.
Mr. Dag-
Excuse me. If we have to do something further down the road before it gets to the council, we should do it. The jog should not be there, let the railroad track be the separation. Mr. McGarry and myself, we did have this conversation, it just, we're just a part on that part. It's not, not, nothing personal, we're just a part on it.
Could I follow up on that? You're requiring, you've specified schools, child daycare, public parks, and residential zone, zoning districts. My question is, churches are not included in here?
Well, they're not as, for one thing, I think we get in conflicts, we're supposed to separate religion from the state, so we, we kind of stay out of that. That, that goes back to older laws, we've kind of stayed out of it. The sensitive uses are the ones where children are involved particularly.
Right, and many churches have childcare.
Well, they would also, if a childcare comes up, it would show up here.
And, and schools. The, the other thing is, we did do a site plan for, now I can't think of the name of the church, it's by Strong Funeral Home on Seventeenth there.
Baptist, the Baptist?
Right, exactly. Now, that butts here, does that make a difference to this map?
Well, they're in the-
Calvary Baptist, I think it is.
That's it, yeah.
That's the old Forest Park Church, Calvary Baptist.
Yeah, the old Calvary Church. Yeah, but they-
This is-
I'd have to look at that. But remember, this is, this map-
It all hinges on approval, and I understand that, yeah.
No, 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 this map is just, it has to meet this criteria. So if it comes in at a date where somebody shows, I want this property, and we carefully analyze it, it may not be eligible. But I'll take a look at that. Remember, this, you're not adopting a map here.
Exactly.
That's why, for us to, this map means nothing. Even if I took the map out, if you follow the criteria in here, that property would still be eligible, okay? So I'm just saying, we would look at those kind of things. So I don't have a quick answer when we looked at this thing.
You can't, you cannot draw a map right now with any, with any meaningful impact on it because it doesn't, the, all the criteria doesn't exist for the ordinance, or this, these are the only properties that meet the criteria we're setting up, is that what we're saying?
Yes, well, based on a rough look at it. It doesn't mean we haven't missed something in there, this is just what we're setting.
And we would have to go-
And obviously, may I add something?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry. Obviously, you want to have enough area that it doesn't look like, I mean, we could make this so restrictive that there'd be one lot that, that could be done. You don't want to do that. You need to give at least a reasonable, reasonable, okay? So, I mean, that, so that's why I'm saying you got to use this with caution, this is not an ordinance for that. This just shows where typically they, they may be eligible for that, but they're still subject to the further review because things may come up that we're not aware when we put this together.
To accomplish what Ken is bringing up right now, to eliminate that one sliver right there, we would have to do overlay district, it's like-
Well, you're getting into more specifics of what, where you want it, then we would have to do a district, which we would have to set up criteria specifically why we set up that overlay district, and what, what properties are chosen in that district.
And would they have, and would they have to sign, would the, when you put an overlay district on individuals or properties, they have to approve that in general?
It gets to be, yeah, it gets to be a little more problematic because it does affect, you know, when you're just using these, shall we say, general criteria to apply, it's much more-
Onerous on the city?
Well, it's less onerous on the, I mean, the city has more of a legal defense how they do it, because we have identified these uses. I mean, not that we wouldn't use that to come up with the overlay district, but the overlay district's a little more complicated because you're actually zoning, putting in zoning.
Do you remember the beach overlay district that always spent three years-
How many years was that? But this is, this doesn't preclude having an overlay at some point in the future.
Oh, no, nothing precludes that.
Yeah.
It's, it's just getting it ready to go because we have other M zonings in the city where you could put it. Once the door is open on this, it starts. Again, I told you before, I've talked to people that have experienced this, if it's not locked down as tight as you can do it, you lose, and you lose as a community. What I don't like is the jog that's there, there's people involved, you do this, and things just keep moving with this. You know, folks that are doing this, this, this is a money thing, this is, I know, I know you're all old enough, it's about drugs. You're talking about heavy-duty money, and they're watching the legislators, they want this to change. Once you start here, they'll come in and start either selling the property off, it's just a domino effect. Then you displace people. These people that live at the end of this road, it's affordable housing, you throw them out in the road because someone's selling the property, it's about economics. It doesn't mean anything to these folks, it's about business. If we have to do a little bit of an overlay zone, that may be better because now you're saying this is the only area. You have other M zones throughout the city that possibly this could go. It's, the lines that are on there, I know it was just for, Tim kind of had to show us something where it is, but later on down the road, people looking at this, they'll call it a zone. I've had people bring it to, oh, that's the zone, that's the zone. No, it's not, it was just an area. Well, that doesn't fly. When this comes in and when they're going to fight a city because you left, kind of left a teeny little open in the door, they bring in the heavy-duty attorneys, they have the money, and usually they win. You lose. You lose as a city. I say, take the jog out. If we have to do the overlay before it goes to the council, do the overlay to the council. I like everything else that they have in there, I don't mind supporting it, not with the sliver.
Are you making a motion to amend what we're going to eventually, I think, approve here? And if so, would you like to make that amendment now?
Which is?
To take the jog out of it, to approve it, is that something you're going to say or not?
That would be fine with me.
And make that motion, we'll see if we get a second.
Okay, I make the motion, as stated by the chairman.
Do we have a second? I'm sorry, does everybody understand what the motion is? Do we have a second?
Say the motion.
Yeah, would you say the motion, Ken?
Just say the motion, so I have it on the record, please.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the ordinance with removing, what's the proper term, the lot? Do I have to name the number of the lot?
No, you're going to have to say that you, you're going to have to change the whole ordinance because basically that lot meets the criteria. This, remember, the, the map's not part of the ordinance, so what you're saying, you would like to amend the ordinance so it further limits the prop, and we'd have to, to do it in an overlay district east of the railroad tracks or something. At least that gives us some indication where you want to go. I don't know how else to-
That, yeah, that's, sounds like a P and Z drug.
Enough to get down, Jerry?
That, that's enough.
Can our council help us with what he's trying to say, so we get a verbiage?
Okay, I think we generally do. Can you like some ordinance that's-
Oppose.
I'm sorry, I turned it off instead of on. But he would prefer to have the language in the ordinance or an overlay district that eliminated that jog portion of the map that Tim has included just as backup.
Yep.
Okay, if that motion has been made, do we have a second to that motion? Hearing no second, it dies for a second. Next item, where are we at now?
Well, you'll need to make a motion on the-
On the main?
On the original ordinance.
I make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
Oh, just a second, we don't have a public hearing, there is no-
There's not a public, right?
Just go ahead and open it up in there.
Open up, open up public comment, we're opening now. Since we see somebody has come into it that may be affiliated with the city, we will ask him if he'd like to speak.
I stand far behind you.
He has the gun, right?
He has the gun.
All right, seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close public comment. We'll make a motion now, now I think we can do yours.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor of that vote?
Under discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken, discussion?
I really think you're making a mistake. It's unfortunate that you all didn't support my motion, but that's your, your privilege. That's too bad for our community. It's also too bad for the folks that live at the end of that street, it's also too bad for those business owners. So it really is, it's just too bad that you couldn't, you couldn't let, let it get amended. Thank you.
And I, and I would like to comment back to you, Ken, I don't think that was any intention here at all. I think when this comes down to it, if they tried a particular property that was inappropriate at that time, that whoever's sitting on this board at that time would find the reasons not to approve that zoning for that individual site plan. And so therefore, I think that there's, I think there was a comment, it was only slightly made and didn't have much comment about, there's a number of properties, if you go out there and look around that area, that would have the same concerns. The railroad track is the largest buffer possibly, but if you go to the east side of that, I think there's a number of other properties you could find the same call on.
Absolutely.
And at that point in time, we will address those as they come up and as they, as they need protection from this type of operation.
And it is a conditional use.
And it is a conditional use, very good.
And I agree with you, just like any property that would come up in front of us, we can deny it, or we can accept it, but I don't think that this should be stopped because of that little piece of property, correct?
So now we can take the vote? Close discussions, vote? Jerry, yeah?
Mr. Dag?
No.
Mrs. Hellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
It passes three to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Well, the next item for today is a recommended revision to the standard City of Vero Beach license agreement for use of real city property for renting of docks, dock space, and boat slips. And there's no numbers or anything available for this, is there? Okay.
No. This isn't an application.
All right. And, Tim, are you going to make the- All right. And, Ken, are you going to make the?
Right, I, I'm going to go ahead. If you recall our last meeting, we had a text amendment that would allow the rental of docks at non-residential properties and really the C-1A and C-1B. And the only place that would be, would be in the Royal Palm Point area. And we went through a hearing on that, which you recommended approval to move that on to the council. But one of the things that came up was the concerns that the neighbors had about this kind of activity on their canal. Their residential properties directly across the street from some of, from these properties. And they were very concerned about the, all sorts of disruptive things that could happen under that. At the time, we explained to them that any dock usage and all that would still, even if the code were changed, would still have to get a license agreement with the city. And the city routinely does that. Even the residential areas in the Vero Isles go through license agreements. Well, one of the things we can do is make changes in the typical license agreement for non-residential properties that would provide much more protection than the code enforcement. The code enforcement, we have to go, and I explained that, the due process, you have to catch people in the act, you have to, you know, you have to go through a process. Now, it's a little different in a license agreement. You're basically given a right at the discretion of the city to use the city's property and the use of that. So certainly the city's in the position to put more restrictions or how you're going to use that property. You've got to be indemn, you have to indemnify the city, you have to do those, have the proper commercial, you know, the insurance and all that. And the, the other thing is that it's easier for the city to terminate. If you're not fulfilling the regu, the requirements of your license agreement, the city can terminate that. The city manager has the authority to do that. All license agreements, though, go to the city council for approval initially. So we came up, and I told you that we'd come up with some proposed changes. So I had met with the, we talked to the city attorney, but I also talked to David Gay over in Public Works. And David does a lot of the license agreements to see how they've, and, and basically we came up with some specific changes that we thought is in section four of the typical license agreement. I did today provide you with a copy of the license agreement. We just entered into with Quail Valley, the new hotel. And you can see that. We're not, I didn't give you the whole thing ahead of time because this wasn't the forum to get into a discussion over the work. But I wanted to just concentrate on the, the section that's the important section that would affect what they could do on the property. I also want to.
You did not get to read this, in other words. We're.
You, yeah. No, no, I just gave, yes. I was, didn't want to get into all that. All right. I just want you also to know, we did send out a copy of this agenda pack, or this, this to the property owners that are along that canal. So they, they had that because they were very interested. We want to be sure they were aware we were passing on. I didn't receive any comments about that, but we did make it available and we're going to discuss it to today's meeting. So I basically want to go through the, the provisions in here, and you can see how restrictive they are. What we did is try to, we looked at the code to make sure that we covered any, with the change that we're doing, that we do some loopholes or something that people could do some other things that we were not aware of. So we tried to do, to cover those. First, the, if you look at the, we had detached proposed revisions, so that's what I'm looking at right now. If you look at A, obviously you have to meet section 3105 of the city code. That would be the, the code provision that, that section of the code's being revised. The other thing is, we didn't want this to turn into marina, meaning we don't want to have people coming in from up north and staying o, you know, part, birthing their boat overnight and heading on out to have a good time. And then, so we said you had to have a minimum of 30 days. It's very similar to what we do, like other transit type things. This would prevent, you'd have to have at least for at least 30 days to prevent people just coming through turnover traffic. So that would limit that. We also, activities are prohibited. We went through some of those issues that were brought up at the, at the meeting. We discussed this with Mr. Barquette, who's the attorney. He checked with his client, Mr. Renick, who had no problems with anything that we have in here that we did. So one of the things we prohibit, fueling the fuel of the watercraft or fuel storage, pumping out of waste, occupancy of watercraft as a temporary or permanent living quarters, any docking, a commercial sightseeing, fishing, industrial, other commercial watercraft, any repairs or servicing of the watercraft that exceed routine maintenance, and a rental of watercraft and marine regular equipment and advertising signs of any kind. So we're really trying to limit what they can. He was, he was satisfied with that, to do that. The other thing we wanted to put in there, we want to be sure that we can enforce and administer this thing. It's, I can tell you now, I've talked to code enforcement, there are other violations of the, of the current prohibition that occurred. I wish I had them with you. He hadn't provided them to me. But we did find some other violations. So it's more than just that one property that we've, that we were dealing with. What they're going to do is have to provide a list of the watercraft, the name of the owners, their registration numbers, and the length of their, that will be on a list provided to the planning director. And they would have to keep that updated. They have so many days. So we could keep track of what's out there and it'd be easier to enforce that way. I mean, it's a, it's a kind of, it puts some pressure on us to do that, but we'll, you know, it's just something we need to do to, you know, because we do want to protect the other riparian, you know, residential property owners from their use and enjoyment of their property. So unless you have some questions, I mean, I certainly opened a.
I do.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Boy, where do I start? At our last meeting, you mentioned moorings and dolphins, and yet I don't see any reference.
Well, they would be, they would be handled by the, by our current code. They wouldn't be able to go out only so far anyway.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so that would prevent, it won't be like a marina, because you can't be outmoored without being really in by a dock because of the, of the length of the, of the canal, or the width of the canal.
I don't look necessarily at the residential area across the street, but the ability of these people to navigate, you know, on the northern side of that canal. If, if the docks can come out, or the moorings and the dolphins can come out 45 feet and maybe similarly on the other side, you have a lot of people potentially navigating a 60-foot channel. Now.
Well, no, no, I mean, yeah, it's a fairly large canal on the south side. It's 150.
I also think about the depth of it because they're strolling.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. And so I'm wondering, is there anything that we can do to prevent them? And I'm thinking more along the lines of the businesses, that they're not going to be, you know, in competition and, or in some way, you know, negatively offsetting each other.
I'm sorry.
Because of the ability to navigate that waterway.
Well, remember, the, the other thing that we look at, our Public Works and my staff, we look at, when dock permits come in, we go through the riparian rights, we make determinations of that. And we now have a policy before we, we even, and that will have to be, you have to get one of that permit, which will then be contingent to finally getting the license agreement. We now make available, in fact, we have one right now in front of me that's in Vero Isles. We will make adjacent property, riparian property owners aware that we are going to issue a permit. So we're going to try to bring up any, remember the issues we talked about in that variance. So some of that will be looked at when we do that. I mean.
So the permitting for all docks have to go through a DEP that?
DP does it, but they're, they don't get into the same level we do, but they do, they do, the DEP does it in the Corps.
What about, yeah, the Army Corps? And what about the Florida Inland Navigation District? They're not involved at all?
And usually they get general exemption permits. It'll be a little different for these other ones because where they're, they're using it because the, but they're not on, the thing is, they're not on DEP sovereign land. It's a little different. But they, they, there are certain requirements for non-residential docks than there are commercial docks. But since it's not DEP sovereign, like, you know, submerged lands, it's ours, it's, it probably wouldn't be quite the same on that thing. But they do have to get those permits. But most of them are very general. I mean, they're, they're exempted from a lot of things. There are a lot of.
And they depend basically on your.
They, we get into the riparian issues and a lot of that. And that's, you know, and we discussed that at that, that variance we went through. Yes.
Okay, because that, you know, I could see, I think this is fabulous and I see, really see this taking off. And I'm just wondering about the boats fighting each other, you know?
Well, yes.
And also, in the license agreement, they're given a non-exclusive use of the canal and waterway for ingress and egress. So it's express upfront.
That's in there.
That it's non-exclusive. They don't get, you know, the full reign of the entire canal.
And that's, it's a very good point because they would be in violation of their, their le, if there's a real problem, they'd be in violation of that lease agreement.
Do we, do we limit how many boats are available in any particular?
Well, now, the, the limitation, obviously, the parking will have to come in. Remember the other thing we said? They're going to have to meet parking. I would say a lot of these places do not have enough parking to be able to, and we're not going to, unless they had the nerve to come in here and ask for one of the, from you all, a special exception, which the staff is going to frown upon. We are not going to, I can tell you, I will not support that. I mean, and, and remember, these businesses are allowed to have their customers. We have a restaurant, you can come in and do that. And any of these, they have a, that kind of thing. And in the past, some of them have gotten credit for, for, to reduce their, their onsite parking. So we'll be very careful when we review any of these applications that come in. They would make sure that they're not getting a double counting and getting double, or double credit for it.
When the licensee, that's the owner of the property who is renting. That's your licensee? Is that correct?
The owner of the property is responsible. He's, he or she, or the organization is the licensee, yeah.
Now, what, do we give them any responsibility in, in any of this?
Well, they're totally responsible for this.
And that's specified in the code?
Yes, I, well, it's specified in the.
License agreement?
License agreement, yeah. I mean, they're responsible for what happens on that, in that area.
Does that include things like waste? You know, do, do they provide garbage receptacles that are screened and?
Yeah.
There is.
Yeah.
And the ability to, waste management to come and pick up, you know, pick up the garbage?
Well, they normally are going to have waste disposal at their locations. Remember, yes, their business. I don't think we want to have, I mean, but if there's waste going into the river from their actions, they're, they're in, they could be in, lose their license agreement. So you know, they behoove them to keep.
Right, the kind of stuff that's generated on the boat when people are out.
Bottles, cans.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're responsible for the, that the lease, the people leasing from them do the right thing.
But this would not allow them to live on board?
No. And one of the careful, I had to be careful because in the ordinance, if you read it, you can't do it in residential district. It's very clear. But in here, the way the ordinance read, our ordinance read, you could, if you had, and it didn't address non-residential, you could, that's why I had to put this in here to, that was, I said, a loophole that somebody could use. And we certainly don't want them setting up, you know, liver boards and running a business out of these things. They, they need to go to the marina for that kind of activity.
Okay.
The, when they come in for the license agreement, is there any type of administration fee that is due when they go for the license agreement?
That's one thing we were talking about. They will definitely have to pay for the code compliance. They'll have to do that. But right now, I, I think we're still looking at maybe doing a, working Public Works, that we were looking at some fees for both right-of-way permits and for these kind of things, right? So right now, they don't have that. That's correct.
Okay. And the other question I had, you, there's the protection in the ordinance that there's no trash bins on, on the dock, you know, trash containers of any type. The, the person that's renting out the dock space, they have like the dumpster on, like off the parking lot somewhere. They can't put the trash cans on the dock.
Well, there's nothing that says you cannot necessarily, but the problem is that the trash gets into the, into the, into, into that. I mean, one of the things we'll certainly look at when we do the code compliance part, we will look at various things that they need to be careful of. So we're going a little more detail when we know what they want to do. Right now, most of my doubt, you know, a lot of them, you can dock straight in. For instance, but some are going to have to come in for after the fact because they never got approval to get these. So even though they may have vessels there now, they've never had approval for those.
And the other concern I, or a couple of little things, because when the neighbors came in, you know, they're, they're concerned with the way it's going to look and what could happen. It's my understanding that on the docks, where the, the boats will be tied up, you won't have any type of storage containers. They can't build, like in some mariners, you have little, little sheds, you know, the house, their paddles and extra boats and motors and things of that nature. So is that, is that so? No, no sheds or little storage bins?
You're talking, referring to a dock box possibly called?
Like a dock, you know, it could be a dock box or like they have, you know, some places you go to, they have little overhangs to protect their things that they use on their boat.
Yeah, well, they can't do that. I mean, there's certain prohibitions in our ordinance that don't allow things over the water anyway.
And in the license agreement too. Because it says, "No improvements, installations or equipment of any kind or nature shall be constructed or installed on the premises without prior review and written approval by the city." So the city always has a hand in what they're putting.
And I mean, we will be, I mean, we got to, without just blankety trying to go through all these things you can't do, we need to, you know, we're going to be careful how we do this.
It's covered, in other words.
It's covered, meaning they're going to have to get approval for whatever they do.
And then it was a concern about the gray water situation. I understand about the pump outs, but I think someone brought up about, you know, when you do the showers and things of that, they consider that gray water. So hey, I had some concerns about that. That's covered. They can't do that either?
Waste.
Well, they can't, they can't, they can't, pumping out of waste, which, that would be.
That's, that's covered, okay.
You know.
Goes into the same tank.
And it's covered. They can't put it out, you know, into the, into the lagoon. And the other thing.
But am I correct, Ken? I don't believe they can pump it onto the shore right there. They have to take it to a facility.
They would have to take it to a facility to do it. This is not a marina.
You're not going to be pumping facilities on the dock, right?
That's correct.
So, Ken, they can't, either showers or toilets, they can't, it has to go someplace else and they get rid of it.
Now, these regulations are even tougher than the ones the residents have to. So just once they understand that.
And the, the other thing I, and this is a question, since they're going to be using their dock space, some of these folks already have the existing docks where the boats can be tied up. Do they get inspected prior to a license agreement where the code folk make sure the docks are safe to walk on, the planks are tight, things of that nature?
Yeah. The point is, we were, let's, for instance, our cause celebre here, the, the rented property. We'll have to go and make sure what was permitted and what wasn't. They'll, and if they don't have permits for certain things, they put some, you know, dolphins out there, pylons that were approved, they're going to have to come and get after the fact to do that kind of stuff, which would, we'll be careful about that. We won't just automatically give you that right to do it. We would look at that, that issue.
Plus, they have to provide insurance, which an insurance company isn't going to insure something that isn't fairly safe, I would imagine.
And that the licensee would be responsible. Does the licensee need to renew the license on a yearly basis?
I, the way that most of them run, they run for, basically forever. I have to look at it unless it's, yeah. I mean, this is the basic license we've done with other ones. So they're going to make.
Does it make sense to ask them to renew on a daily basis?
Certainly the insurance.
Yearly basis?
Daily stuff.
The insurance has to be provided annually.
Yeah, the, the insurance, they have to show they have current insurance. That's true.
So then, just updating it on a yearly basis.
Right, right. But they're going to make improvements. I mean, it's, it's the same.
There's a great termination clause. I mean, we can terminate.
Yeah, the termination clause is great. That's why I brought that up. And I think that's, you know, that certainly is the stick you can use to keep people in line. So a lot more effective than the code enforcement process.
I have several questions. I'll be, Tim. The first one is, on the first page we received at the bottom, it says, "Any license agreement will require city council approval."
That's correct.
Why wouldn't we go to an administrative approval on that? Is that because you didn't want it?
Because it's, no, it's, not that I'm trying to avoid work. It's real city property, the submerged lands, that's why. When you deal with real, they have to do a license agreement. We do that all the time. You just don't, there aren't a lot of things that you would see.
Is that the kind of thing that's on a consent agenda?
Uh, yes, it, it can be on the consent. It can be pulled off the consent agenda too, when we have a problem.
The second question I have for you. The people that, that own the commercial property there, they're not under the licensing agreement if they're putting their personal boat behind their property. They're under the situation that exists today. Is that correct legally?
Yes. What has happened in the, in the, is that we didn't start doing the license agreement until just a few years ago. And that, I don't know if as we discovered, we own that, or something like that. It didn't come into play until we got involved with, I believe it was that, you know, the condo, that just, that big condo thing. They were asking for dockage or something. And then that's when I think we, we got into that. And since that time, we've been doing, when people come in for permitting and all that kind of, for instance, we have a lot of residential docks, as I was just saying, we have one right now that we're dealing with. Then, when they're going to do improvements to dock, then they have to get the license agreement. We don't retroactively go in and tell somebody they have to do it. Now, if they want to do these, these non-residential, even though they may have a dock, they'll still have to come in for a license agreement. They're going to be using city property, whether they're doing actual improvements or not on that, in that area.
Let me, let me, I don't understand then. Let me get back one more. A commercial operation that owns his own private boat and is docking it out behind his property, okay? He doesn't, right now, he's not necessarily under any licensing agreement whatsoever.
No, he isn't.
And he will not be required to get a license on that.
Not his own personal boat.
And or under the code that exists today, he, his tenant could do, be docked there also without a license agreement. So if this gentleman that owns this commercial property is going to lease to somebody other than his tenant and or himself.
He would have to get a license.
Then the license agreement comes into effect.
That's correct.
And that's when all this applies.
That's correct.
Okay, so with that in mind, those people that are complying right now and are not in violation by leasing it out to somebody else, they're, this doesn't impact them necessarily. Is that correct?
No, that's not, yes, that's true.
Okay. The, the next question, changing a little bit of subject. When the people, I'm concerned about the people, and I think they have a legitimate concern, but on the, I think it's a two-way street. The people on the residential side, they're looking over to commercial area. Normally, in a commercial area, between a residential and a commercial area, we require screening of some kind. In this case, that screening is almost impossible because we have water that prohibits us from putting screening, or you, you would block off their own view to the water. So in a lot of cases, we can't help them as much as we can. What we can do, though, is try to ask the commercial people, and, and I, I don't like the word tell, but I like, try to encourage those people on the commercial side to make it as, as pleasing as possible. If they put their dumpster kind of, can they put a, can we kind of get a fence around if their dumpster's on the back part of their lot? There, anything that would be complimentary to a neighbor. If a neighbor was across the way, if you were the neighbor, you would like that. So therefore, it's reciprocal. You'd like to try to do what you can for other people. I don't know how, I haven't read the licensing agreement yet, so I don't know what teeth we have to help that at all. teeth we have to help that at all.
Well, but the, the problem is, and that was brought up at the hearing, remember, you're dealing with the landside stuff that's outside the license agreement area.
That's site plan.
It's a site plan. And I'm going to take a look at our, our site plan, because we do have a screening requirement for most dumpsters on non-residential. I don't know if the canal even blocks that. I've got the ordinance here.
Do we, do we enter into riparian rights here with, you know, a few? Does that enter into this at all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's water rights, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we look at that when we're doing the docks. I mean, we get into riparian rights when we're doing, looking at docks and moorings and all that stuff.
When I'm looking for, for some kind of protection for those people across the way, we really, we're not really dealing with that. That's back on their site plan, which has already been approved and et cetera, and to go back and modify that now. But now, when they enter a new licensing agreement, if they wish to have that additional abilities, that's when I was wondering if we could--
Well--
Any, is there any way--
I certainly, I'm going to--
They're not overlapable.
I'm going to look at our code--
Okay.
Because it may be covered already, before we go, you know, nuts about it. We go through the code compliance thing, they're going to, that, that we deal with some landside things. Remember, parking comes into the play here. We may, we may be able, through gentle persuasion and get them to agree to do something that way. But I'll look at the code, whether maybe that's something we need to, to do that. But I would say, but I can't really deny somebody for meeting the code, you understand?
I understand.
But certainly, I, I would say of most of the business owners, they want to do the right thing.
They want to do the right thing.
You're not going to, and if they think it'll expedite getting their, their right to do that, oh, you know, putting up a screen or something--
They live in the neighborhood, too.
Yeah, they live in the neighborhood, too. So I will certainly look at that, okay?
I checked with Wayne on the term, because he does these dock license agreements frequently, and I, it's just not part of my lexicon, I do other things. But he said that there isn't any specific term, they just stay in place unless they're terminated. And as I mentioned, the termination provision is very good, so that's just how they work them. But as I mentioned, the insurance is due, proof of insurance is due annually, so we do have that continual reassurance that we're insured and we're indemnified.
If not, we have the ability to terminate the license.
Right, that would be a breach.
Okay.
Are you looking for--
I'm looking at the code, and supposedly, refuse, waste removal and recycling areas of non-residential should be screened from adjacent properties and public right-of-way. That is a public right-of-way, so we'll look at, okay?
So the canal doesn't make a difference, it's still--
Since we consider it a public right-of-way.
There you go.
They'll believe me, I'll tell you.
I'm not sure.
And along most of those businesses in the back or sidewalks, anyway.
That's correct.
So that's right-of-way.
Well, I don't, I think they're all on their private property.
Private property, though, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there additional discussion or questions?
I have no more.
How about you, honey?
Yeah, no, that was, looks to be covered very nicely. Thank you.
Are we, what do we want, a motion here?
I'd like to have a motion that favorably you to pass this on to the city council.
Now, did we make any changes here at all, or is it just strictly--
Far as I know, you have.
We've just clarified a lot.
I agree with that.
Because it goes into all the codes that we have in place already in backup.
You all right? I'm fine.
Okay, I'd like to move that we accept staff's recommendation.
Do we have a second to that?
I second it.
It's been first and seconded. Any discussion? No additional discussion? We open it up to the public, is that correct?
Oh, let me just say, the thing with the licensure, though, do we need any clarification on that? That they're going to provide proof of insurance on yearly--
It's all in the license--
It's all in the license.
We didn't read it, remember, we just got it. That's why we didn't get a chance to read it.
Yeah, right, okay. So there really was nothing that we--
He doesn't trust us with it ahead of time.
I would open it up. Everyone has a chance to speak whenever you all make a vote, so.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Please hold back, not rush up here at one time, and then since we see nobody coming forward, we will close public comment. And now we can proceed with the vote.
Mr. Dag?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellman?